It's time to open the hearing.
I could be wrong.
So it's 9:15, we'll open the hearing for site plan review, Dumping Daughter Restaurant. We've given this 45 minutes. Will you be presenting?
I'd be happy to.
Okay. If you would introduce yourself to all of us.
Sure, my name is Nadia Liu Stellman, and I grew up here in Weston. I left this town, and I married my husband, who I grew up with in Weston. And we're here supported by my mother behind me, Sally Ling from New Jersey, and my mother-in-law Kathy Stellman, who also had a store in the center for a long time while we were growing up. I was raised in a restaurant family. My best memories were over at dinner table at the restaurant, at home. Spoiled by incredible food growing up, but my favorite food was my mom's cooking. So what I really want to do is showcase my favorite food, which is my mom's cooking. So this has been something I've wanted to do since I was in middle school. My late father wanted to have a restaurant in Weston. And he always had talked about it, but brewers moved in after the diner, so he kind of missed out on that opportunity. And when I told my mom, "What about a restaurant in Weston?", she ironically said, "That's a great idea", which is exactly what my father had wanted too. So I felt like this is just a great place for me to start my business and share my favorite food. That's why I'm here.
My name's Kyle Stellman, I'm Nadia's husband. I'm also her project manager. For kind of like the construction and transaction side of things, I run a family real estate business, and we develop retail shopping centers. So kind of bringing my expertise to the table, just to kind of help her behind the scenes. But don't mistake it, she's really the brains behind the operation, and certainly the creative side of things. But just going to help her throughout the process of getting the doors open, and then certainly be support behind the scenes. But that's kind of my role on the left here this evening as well.
And I also have to introduce my landlord Steve Bradley, and my very kind neighbor, who's nice enough to support me, Roy McAlve.
So maybe you can review the anticipated proposed changes.
Sure. So I remember that when I was in college, my little sister was still in Weston, and there was a Campo di Fiori restaurant. And it was a great, great restaurant. And then when they left, it was offices. And when I went to Betsy to talk about the hours of usage, she, you know, presented to me that the hours of usage had changed from Campo. And so we had to apply for the restaurant hours of usage that were originally in place from 2002 to 2005, which had been changed in 2012.
I can actually input a little gap here. So when Campo di Fiori, they got overextended. They opened up the restaurant, the restaurant in Weston was doing quite well. But they had a restaurant in Cambridge, and then they opened, tried to open one over. They did open one up in Boston near BU, and that one turned out to be a disaster for them. And they got into financial problems, so they end up, you know, it took them, took all three other restaurants down. And so Omni approached me, because at the time, they had not gotten their beer and wine license. And they'd also, the fire in Chestnut Hill had happened. So and their offices were in, were in the building in Chestnut. They had an Omni supermarket across from the Chestnut Hill mall. So they rented this restaurant, quote, temporarily, in hopes that they would get a beer and wine license. Not to open a restaurant, but to open up the wall between the two and create sort of a wine and beer and cheese and crackers, sort of, you know, another department from the Omni store. So they didn't touch it, they left it, they literally camped out in the space, because they didn't know what, you know, what the prognosis was for getting their beer or their wine license. They first got the wine license, and that prompted them to start looking into the feasibility of opening up the wall between Omni and that.
That's the last time we saw.
Yeah, to discover that that was a much bigger task than they had envisioned before. It's a structural wall, there's two stories above this restaurant, there's only one story above the supermarket. That wall is, between the two is a structural wall. The floors aren't quite at the same level. There was a lot more going on to it, and so they decided what did not make sense to expand the Omni supermarket into that space. And so they then, I think they were, they hadn't, I learned this after that, but they were pursuing possibly opening up some type of diner-style restaurant. I think that's why they changed the hours. And I was unaware of that until Nadia told me that. So they, whatever approval they came in to get the hours to change, I was unaware of that. So then unfortunately, you know, the father retired, and the son took over the business, and Omni started its decline at that point. But so, long story short, I should say, is the restaurant, Campo di Fiori's space is actually exactly the way it was the day they left. You know, in the five years, or six years that Omni-
Omni was in there as offices.
They used the front half for office space, they had files and offices set up, and they never touched the kitchen and the back half and the counter space. So there's virtually, when they moved out of there a few months ago, it looks just like it did the day Campo di Fiori left.
So we're trying to get the site plan approved for the original hours of Campo. Actually, a little bit less, because Campo had 7:00 AM, whereas we're looking for 11:00 AM open, 9:00 PM closed.
Basically, I went back and took a little bit of review of what's happened on this site and what Nadia is proposing with Dumping Daughter is. Fewer hours, similar conditions, similar operation.
Fewer seats.
With fewer seats.
And why the fewer seats? Are you changing the actual design of the restaurant, or?
It's only cosmetic changes to the restaurant. My architect and I, you know, are very big on how you feel when you sit in the restaurant, and we don't want it to feel crowded. We want each table to have enough privacy. So 31 is a nice healthy number for everybody, I think.
No changes to the exterior lighting?
No.
And the sign?
Yeah, it's in the package.
Does it comply to the signage western?
Well, it was consistent with brewers and brothers.
Right, right.
The only suggestion I had was moving it down so that it's in between the columns, but-
But that's where the door is.
We just wanted it centered more towards the entrance, just so as you're pulling into the shopping center, you know, there's really one main way you come in. So as you drive down, we wanted it to be closer to the entrance. But, you know, we certainly understood the other suggestion.
It's actually centered on the dormers above.
I was wondering about that.
If you look at it, as opposed to the columns below. So I think, you know, it depends which way you're looking with. If you're looking up, it's-
What you're representing.
Yeah, because if you move it back, if you move it to the left, it will line up with the columns, but it's going to be off-center to the dormers. So, you know, I actually-
I guess the location of columns is a problem, but we'll fix that, right?
As long as they don't consider the drive through.
Yeah, that's right.
So it looks like in the good weather, you might have room to have some tables outside. I'm wondering if we need to think about expansion in advance, so you don't have to come back to us.
Well, there are tables out there already.
Are there?
Yeah, those are actually brew, I mean brewers supplied them. And they are, they maintain, they bought them and they maintain them. Theoretically, the permission I gave them is they're open for general use. So someone else could use it, but they are, they're the ones who put it out there.
But they've got the little corner sort of indentation there, but maybe, I don't know, anyway.
Well, no, because I was wondering, what if you're so successful that you're turning people away, you want to add either a couple tables inside, or a few tables outside in the summer?
Or you want to bring it up to the pre-approved max?
Right.
Rather than you have to approve one, you know, a smaller number, and then you have to come back.
If the board would be open to approving it to the max, that's certainly something we welcome, but, you know, at this time, we would start with the lower.
I mean, you don't anticipate.
Right.
I mean, just-
That'd be a great problem for us to have, obviously.
I mean, that's what it was with the other one, why don't you set number four, you want to put that extreme on it?
We just wanted to show you what we designed, that's all, so it would be accurate. I appreciate it.
When you say that you expect 40 people for dinner on weekend evenings, is that 40 people at a setting, or at a time?
I think throughout the evening.
Because if you have 31 chairs total, seems like you would accommodate more than 40 people in one evening.
I was being modest with the forecast there. I hope to be more than that. So maybe if I could do three seedings of the 31, that would be great on the weekends.
But do you, I'm not sure what our jurisdiction is, but we're supposed to be approving.
Just the way the change, the change of view, there's the change, the use of it, and the what it looks like on the outside.
But it's not a change in use.
It is like-
I had a discussion with Omni.
Have you and Omni actually had to go through the change of view?
Omni was in here.
Oh, they worked on that.
That was a change of use. This is a change in use back, but it's a change of view.
I mean, I did have a discussion with the building inspector about this, because it felt like it was already a restaurant.
Right.
And so it was already approved, but his contention was that it triggered site plan review and a special permit. So Nadia's come before this board tonight, and then she will go to the CBA for a special permit, for the use.
For the use, right. So what is our jurisdiction?
So your jurisdiction is parking, lighting-
Signage.
Signage. It's a pre-existing situation. The signage is in accordance with the center's operations and internal operations. Lighting, my understanding is there was no exterior lighting. The parking is the parking. Prior approvals have granted more seating, which would have triggered more parking spaces. Nadia has indicated she needs about 10 spaces. Generally, there's a fair amount of flux of parking spaces in that area, so.
On site, we have over 100 parking spaces at the shop, at the shopping, just the shopping center. It does not include centers, the parking on Center Street, you know, and up, or by 426 Boston Post Road. But on the actual physical site plan for the shopping center, we have over 100 spaces.
Is the one behind?
Yeah, it's the one behind, it wraps around, it wraps around the back, as well as what is immediately in front of that.
I guess, so are you saying that our approval should conclude the occupancy? The number of people that are approved?
Yeah.
Number of seats, right.
31 seats in the restaurant.
And you may, based on the discussion, you may want to say, well, she's asked for 31 spaces, but-
Up to 46.
Up to the previous.
Up to 46, yeah.
Well, I'd say up to whatever the building code allows.
Well, up to the previous approval from the last restaurant that was in there. By nice and safe, as far as I'm concerned.
Do we know if that was up to?
46.
46.
Yeah, that would be desired, thank you.
Yeah, 46 would be great, and if it's, if that's all, I would not want people to wait long.
Well, we're all very self-interested parties.
It's our motivation.
That's so great to hear.
You said you were thinking of three seedings for dinner, is that what you were thinking?
No, I was saying, in a perfect world, that would be a great amount of seedings, but-
Yeah, in this case, it's, you anticipate a faster turnaround, I imagine. In other words, people will come in, they might, they might be there for 20 minutes, or 30 minutes, that sort of thing.
It's a lot like Campo, where it was quick service and soft serve.
And it's going to be takeout as well.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean even Campo di Fiori, I think they did more in takeout than they did in seating, but they-
It's because your seating was so uncomfortable.
It all worked.
Other discussion?
So I did draft a, I did draft a decision for this.
Really?
Yeah.
In anticipation?
In anticipation, but I was trying to be optimistic here. So what I did was I looked at the Campo decision. I looked at a couple of the decisions, prior decisions. And that's how I came up with the conditions.
The date in the first paragraph of two should be whatever it is.
Right, under background and authority?
Yeah, August 16, 2011.
Right, but I want, the whole goal there was to try to put the fact that historically it's been a restaurant.
That site plan approval had been approved.
Right, right.
This background, yeah.
Yeah, but that's not even quite back to the original Campo di Fiori, so.
Yeah, the original would have been 2002.
Okay.
But why don't we, why aren't we just talking about this site plan approval?
Okay, we can do that.
And then the public hearing and the paragraph after that should be day?
And it was Mr. Alphenheimer, Mr. Chadabach.
And if we did go to 46 chairs, would there be additional tables? So how many additional tables for 15 more chairs?
Probably seven at the max, so four or five larger tables.
So we would alter that to a total of how many tables?
We can say four, five.
Well, why?
You can add it in conditions.
Do we have to say tables? Why wouldn't you say the number of seats?
Yeah, just keep it simple.
Up to 40.
Well, tables are in, but, okay, we can take tables out.
Because my right question, Campo di Fiori is, the one where she's got the two, two at a table going down the line, those were four at a table.
Right.
Yeah, it was pretty tight.
That's why it was so uncomfortable.
Yeah, so it wasn't another table, it was a wider table with four chairs on it, versus a narrow one, so.
But it can be any configuration.
Right, yeah, we don't care about that, it's a max number.
That's right.
Well, this is what she proposed. This is what she proposed, you could put in the, in the conditions of approval.
Right, the conditions of approval, right, there you go.
Then the applicant was proposing 11 tables and 31 chairs, and the board feels that up to-
41, 46.
46 seats. Can be allowed.
460 seats.
She doesn't have that much space.
Would you expect more?
So the same, but that's number seven?
Early October.
I was, under findings and conditions, we're just saying number seven. 46 seats.
Yeah.
Can I ask a next question?
Sure.
Are you going to be MSG free as well?
Yes.
We have all kinds of suggestions.
You're smashing the food board.
It's like a little focus group here.
We actually are doing a focus group with the WCCA, with all the moms. A lot of moms in town, we're going to do a focus group and find out what their kids like, what they like. See if that idea.
So do we want to delete the paragraph about how many people they anticipate serving?
No, because can we just leave that one?
As long as it doesn't limit.
Yeah, no, because we're, under our findings and conditions, we're saying seating, a maximum seating of 46.
Under the conditions, so.
It seems to fit between five and six, just by the way it's written. Because it makes sense.
So we're calling it number six and seven will be the-
Right, exactly, six is the new seven.
Yeah, six is, yeah.
Okay, so we're having up to 46 seats.
The only thing, I'm not really, under the first paragraph in four, under findings and conditions, you say the board voted blank to approve change in use from restaurant to restaurant use.
So those are from offices?
Page three, findings and conditions, first paragraph, last sentence, the board voted to approve change in use from restaurant to restaurant use.
Yeah, it should be offices, correct.
Okay, yeah, is that right?
Yeah.
So the solar aquatic wastewater treatment plant working okay?
Yeah, no, it works, works quite well. If anything, it, you know, we, we're, we're well below our capacity. It actually runs better with more. So we, we've got four, four lines in the greenhouse, and we typically only run two or three lines at a time, because it runs more efficiently and you keep one shut down. So we've got, we've got plenty of capacity.
That's good, that's good. Yeah, I see those in a lot of places, but it works really well.
You know, my hope is, my hope had been, you know, at some point that we're going to get, maybe across the street from, from us, you know, but they're about to do the road over, and I've spoken to the road about putting a, a line underneath a, basically a pipe.
Solar park.
Well, it's actually more of a sleeve for solar, so it's, it's there so that in the future, if Cross Street wants to tie into the solar aquatic system, they don't have to dig up the road. There's going to be an access pipe underneath there to tie into it, you know, and, you know.
I would wish that, so are you saying, like, for example, there's a property that's for sale there, and if this sleeve would go to that spot?
No, well, not for sale, the stores across the street from us, directly across the street, have, you know, have a marginal, have a marginal septic system, let's just call it, straightened out.
Except for existing shops?
Existing shops, and at some point, it would, it would be nice if they would tie, you know, it would increase our flow, and it could solve their problem. And the, and the problem in the past has been the expense of getting across the road. So if they do the work here, if we solve that problem, it's probably likely they will at some point tie in.
So have you talked to the landlord or whatever?
The-
Is it Clark?
Well, it's-
I think it's El Piz, except up to so many.
No, no, some, no, some, no. The Pesek family owns the left, the Pesek family owns the left side. Yeah, one son owns, yeah, one son owns it now, and then the other half is owned by somebody else. East one has more of a problem, the right half of that shopping center, or that block, has more of a septic problem than the left. But the left half is quite, I've seen the system, and you wonder how long it's going to continue.
Because it might be of something of mutual interest to him, like, service.
Is five really the maximum number of employees, or do you want to allow for more?
Especially if it's under 46.
We have to stipulate how many?
Right, if, if the approved number of seats goes to 46, if we could add two more employees for approval, that would be great.
Okay, so up to seven?
Up to seven, yeah, okay. Just because the stipulation in this says you have to come back, so if you start to breathe more frequently.
And so we want to add that to six, to number three, sorry? Employees should park in the rear parking lot, and employee numbers show-
Well, why don't we keep the occupant numbers together with the employee numbers, does that make more sense?
Yeah, so maximum 46 seats and seven employees?
Right, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
And that's enough, right? It's always easier to like, go with now.
What do you think, Mom? Seven employees?
At any one given time.
That's right.
I think at one given time, seven.
That was probably my mistake.
So better say, two, seven employees at any given time.
So she can have 25 employees on premises.
I think we should be clear.
Right, seven on premises. Did you get all the word changing?
I think so.
I think I made the mom's profile something.
Unfortunately, she's retired. I'm bringing her out of retirement.
And that should be whatever date they-
It's got to be a long answer.
Just like your kids kind of backing with you, I rely on you.
No, no.
July 1st, 2014.
Okay.
I changed that to today's. July 1st, 2014. And then this one changes.
We have another question. So when do you start telling them?
Hopefully early October.
The application was submitted?
Yeah, so just cross that out.
Yeah, I'm changing that whole section of the background.
On the first page, it was nothing on the second page.
Yeah, I didn't, did you find anything on the second page?
I mean, there's a dot, dot, dot.
Oh, yeah.
Discussion, right, which we can-
Right, and I'm going to add what transpired tonight into that discussion.
And then on the last page, Betsy, findings and conditions of approval. The very first sentence, the planning board finds that-
Change restaurant, the first restaurant to office.
The proposed change of-
Proposed.
It says proposal change, yeah, right, so it's proposed change in use.
First paragraph. We can just give this to you.
Yeah, I can give it, just copy. But just going-
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah, yeah.
From office.
And then Steve's point on the last line, going from the use from office to the restaurant. And then the changing of the numbers, where there's a-
We're adding a number six, and then up to 46 seats.
Right.
Up to seven employees at one given time, and then old six becomes seven.
Right. The only thing I would change also is, there's the word may in the seven, I'd change that to will require.
You mentioned will require in the site plan.
Or shall require, shall.
Do we need to put anything for the number of seats outside?
My understanding, the reason I didn't include that, was that my understanding is that the seats that are outside are all available to kind of everybody. So if I went in there and got takeout, I could, similar to brewers.
But are you thinking of adding additional tables outside?
Well, the tables outside are, it's to Mr. Bradley's discretion, what's done outside, that's common area for his tenants. So it's not really Nadia's.
Part of that corner is used for the shopping carts. Stores and shopping carts, so there isn't as much area. Brothers has actually put a couple tables outside of theirs, and there is probably room for one, or maybe two, in front of their store, but the shopping carts need to go somewhere, so they take up, you know, part of the area there.
But it would seem that the, that the shopping carts could go in the Brothers' area, since they don't service the-
Well, they're actually people, they, they do, you know, they make sandwiches and stuff, and people do eat, sort of out underneath, out from under the overhang, at least in the warmer weather, that's-
They're communal, anyway.
Yeah, they're all communal.
So can someone move on this?
Unless there's more discussion?
Or if there'll be, so this is-
We have to close the hearing first, right, and then, so I move the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll move that we'll, we'll approve the certificate of action for site plan approval for 37 Center Street Dumping Daughter Restaurant, with the adjustments and conditions that we have on our list, but that's a-
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is a record. I guarantee we had approval on the same. I guarantee you had approval on the same.
Woohoo, Betsy!
Anticipated.
We'll be down!
Thank you.
Very excited.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, look forward to having all of you.
Look forward to having you.
So what will happen is, I'll clean up this decision, it will get filed probably on a Monday.
Okay.
You'll be sent a copy.
We can't be filmed in Kyle's mind.
You have to take it before you enter the street. And once it gets reported at the register, I will, oh, I will also tell the building and study that, knowing sometimes don't, until then, I, I, for, I don't know when she makes a release.
Okay.
So she's not quite sure.
Okay.
Because they, they kind of, they don't have the records.
Okay.
So, so-
So I'll wait for the, the finalized copy, and then we'll be able to-
Wow!
And then, and so you still need the special permit of the building.